Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, January.
Wednesday, January.
Next year.
2022. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Toop, Mr. Witherspoon.
We have, we will have our usual moment of silent meditation, but in talking to people in council caucus, we realize there are a number of people we want to remember tonight, people who are dealing with health issues and some people that we've lost. And the first person I'm going to mention is actually Franco Harris, because he made an impact not just on the football field, but with the way he lived his life. And he was a frequent visitor to Erie, you know, spoke at some sports banquets and everything. So more than just a football player, he made an impact with what he was doing. So we want to remember Franco. Died at an inopportune moment before the 50th anniversary of the Immaculate Reception. So we have some others who are going to remember some people, I think, and ask for your thoughts and prayers for some people for their health recovery. So let's start with Mel, okay?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like the prayers go out to Tyrone Moore and his family. Tyrone is still in Florida. He fell down the stairs, fractured his neck, and he's, right now, he's still paralyzed from the chest down. Also to Naaman McWilliams, who recently suffered a stroke. Naaman was the former executive director of Drunken Alcohol in Erie County for many years. Thank you, Madam President.
Mo, would you be able to talk about the owner of Red Hots, who we lost?
All right, so I wanted to just give our honor and respect to the family of George A. Katsavas. He was the owner of a Red Hot Restaurant. I'm sure most people have lived in Erie over the last forty or fifty years, enjoyed a good grilled burger, Greek hot dog, or Greek fries at his place. I think he was also relatives of people who owned New York Lunch. So, your homage is my book.
And then Jasmine is going to-
I would like to take a moment and have a moment to honor Darnell Starworth Jr. He passed away this past weekend. He was a great asset for community organizing and activism within the Erie community, and he is survived by many children and grandchildren in the Erie community who are Erieites. So I started my work in 2018, and he helped inspire a lot of people in his time. So the community definitely lost someone.
Thank you. Is there anybody else, or will we move to our prayer time? Michael?
Let's have a moment of silence for those who passed. Dear Heavenly Father, we're coming for you today, Lord. Oh, just first of all, just grateful and thankful that you've allowed us to assemble in these chambers today. We ask that you help us make good and prudent decisions on behalf of the city, oh Lord. We ask that you look down on those who are in need of recovery, oh Lord. We have illnesses and sicknesses in the lives, in their lives. We just ask that you have a special, special blessing for them and help them heal, help them recover, strengthen them, strengthen their families. We ask that you also comfort those who mourn, that you strengthen those families also, and that you help them to move on into the next phase of their life, knowing that there's going to be a void. And we just ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and we do not for just chance, one nation, and a God invisible, with a living justice for all.
We have a motion to accept the minutes from the Wednesday, December 7, City Council meeting and bills for payment on December 22nd and December 29. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Toop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. We have a presentation this evening honoring Council President Liz Allen as her Year of City Council.
Thank you very much. So I can gavel stuff at home too, or is that? Thank you.
You get part of a meeting next time.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure and a learning experience. Now we go to repository sales. Is there anybody here to speak about a repository sale? One more. Nobody on waiting, in the waiting room either. All right, then we move to public comments.
If you could speak into the mic, state your name and address, and then you can get five minutes.
Hello, I'm Mackay Ramsey. I'm a junior from Collegiate Academy. I live on 621 East 22nd Street. I'm here in support of the Environmental Advisory Council, and I'm also a part of the Junior Police Athletic League. I stand in front of the community today to show my support with the Environmental Advisory Council. I believe it is very important that the city has experts behind them to help them on important projects that impact the city. Having experts at hand will help improve our beautiful city. The AAC is such a wonderful idea. I was so happy to hear that Mr. Joe Schember wanted to create one in support of our city. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Pat Lupo, Benedictine Sister. I live at 355 East 9th Street. I'm here also to support the Environmental Advisory Council. And I also had another item I wanted to mention, and that's in terms of Erie Coke. I did send some of you an announcement. Since we're now in court, there isn't, there's an opportunity for victim impact statements. And we're trying to get the word out. I'm hoping the city will put it on the statement that I sent on their website, and perhaps it could be mentioned also at your press conference. So, and we're trying to get word out to the neighborhood. If there's anyone that wants more specific information, you can contact me through my email or phone number, and I can get information to you. But this is an opportunity for the people in our community who have suffered any kind of damage, whether it's mental, whether it's physical, to themselves personally, to their cars, to their houses. It's an opportunity for them to seek compensation. So I want to really get the word out throughout our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I did see your email, but I just skimmed it. So is there a deadline to respond, that we need to make people aware of?
At this point, no. The EPA has just asked, we have been working with the EPA, both the cleanup section and also the criminal investigation section. And so they asked us, the criminal investigation section, asked us to help them get the word out so that they can get victim impact statements.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Fred Ittefer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. So I am happy to see the Environmental Advisory Council on the agenda, and that I hope that as the council is constituted with people with expertise, that the full authority that the EAC has under state law is implemented, and that besides just what is designated by council to act on, that the council is able, the county, the city council, that the Environmental Advisory Council is in turn able to offer suggestions related to environmental justice, protection of biodiversity, and other matters. And now for my usual shopping list of things that I think the city should be working on. Traffic mitigation ordinance. The city needs a traffic mitigation ordinance. I have a feeling that the traffic mitigation ordinance will not be in place in time to address the many traffic impacts that could occur if the IRG happens in Erie, but the city should have and can have a traffic mitigation ordinance so that the impacts of developments, all kinds of developments on traffic can be mitigated through requirements. Currently, the city has no authority to do that. The city is doing a much better job in protecting the ability of people to use the sidewalks during construction, but there's still a long way to go. I can't tell exactly how long Sassafras at 10th Street has been closed by the cathedral, but it's been a very, very long time. Similarly, Erie Insurance had sidewalks closed for a very, very long time. It really isn't necessary. They could, just as the Warner did, and as the EDDC is currently doing, provide a pedestrian bypass. An ordinance, which I understand is probably in the works, related to improving construction access, is really important. As a resident of the Baldwin Park neighborhood, I am concerned with a bikeway that is planned on Green Garden, and that we have yet to be brought into the process of planning this bikeway, which will have a significant impact on parking, traffic, on pedestrian access, especially for people who are blind and visually impaired. And I know of two people who are legally blind living in my neighborhood, and my friend Shelley, who lives up by 38th Street, who would be impacted. Similarly, with Baldwin Park, the residents of the neighborhood would still like to be more involved with how that park is managed. I participated in the Greenways discussions, the East Bayfront Greenway, and while it is important for the neighborhood, it's also important for the city how decisions like this are managed. There's a lot of money being thrown at this project. And Sister Pat, who I have the greatest respect for, lives in that neighborhood and thinks it's a good idea, and it probably is, but I am concerned that it will posit, what I am concerned about is the actual problem is not being addressed. The problem that isn't being addressed is the deterioration of housing because of absentee landlords, the city's inadequate rental inspection program, and a real attempt to rehabilitate housing. Across the street from me, my neighbor had a fire, and they tore that house to the studs. New roof, new windows, new drywall, new everything. And it's not a fancy house, it's not an expensive house, but it was saved. The character of our neighborhood is retained. I am concerned that there's a lot of ambition to tear down more houses rather than to address, it's like cancer. It's not just curing cancer, it's prevention. We need more prevention. So I hope that the city really takes a good hard look at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sheri Mason. I live at 821 West 2nd Street. I'm here today because the city has an opportunity to participate in an EPA SWIFER grant. SWIFER stands for Solid Waste Infrastructure for Recycling. These grants are intended to be used to improve local post-consumer materials management, improve local waste management systems, and build a circular economy for waste and recycled materials. Grants are somewhere between a half a million to four million dollars. They require no match. That means this is basically free money that the city can petition for. The writing of the grant would not be done by any city official or personnel, not even be done by a county person. There's somebody volunteering to write the grant. The county is on board. For the county, they are looking at getting money to do a feasibility study for the county to have its own MRF, which would help to create value in our recycling materials. They are also looking at creating a solid waste management district, which would help to get trash and recycling collected in more rural areas of our community, which would help a number of things, namely litter. But the lion's share of the grant that we are looking, that this committee has looked at putting together, is two and a half million dollars to go to the city to implement a solid waste diversion program that I believe was recently presented to this very City Council students from Penn State Barren. So basically, implement that entire proposal without any funding coming from the city of Erie. In order for us to move forward, in order for the committee to move forward with that grant application, they simply wanted to know, the county wanted to know, that the city was on board. To my knowledge, no conversation was had with Mayor Schember. To my knowledge, no conversation was had with the City Council. To my knowledge, one person and one person alone made the decision and sent an email to the county saying that the city would not be involved in this grant application, without any conversation with anybody. I believe that government is by the people, for the people, and should include the people. Conversations can be had if this individual is not open to exactly what is being proposed, but this individual is not open to having those conversations with the citizens of this community. That is, he has specifically refused to have meetings, and when individuals have requested meetings with the mayor, the mayor has indicated that this individual should, that they should contact this individual, who once again refuses to have meetings. I sent an email to every single person at the City Council, to no avail. So I'm here today asking you all to do whatever you can in order to push this conversation forward. It's a conversation, that's all we're looking to have, and not have one person decide for the entire city to not go after two and a half million dollars.
Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I mean, in all honesty, any type of money that is grant money is a decision for council and the mayor, not one individual specifically to make that decision. So thank you for bringing this information, because I don't know about the rest of the council, but we're trying to be more environmentally friendly. We're in need of new revenue sources. So if this is an opportunity, we want to hear every opportunity that could be coming down the pipeline. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. I have sent an email to all of you. I can send it again. I included the EPA grant application, RFA as it's called. There was something else I was going to say. Oh, the letter of intent was due December 15th. Obviously, we missed that deadline. However, it's not required. The grant application was originally due January 16th, but they have extended it to February 16th. My point is, though, that time is of the essence, and this decision needs to be made now, like quickly, especially for whoever is planning to write the grant, to write the grant, because it takes time. Thank you.
Could you also make sure you send any correspondence to us, to our clerk also, so that, you know, we may not view all of our mediums, you know, in the timely fashion?
Absolutely. Yeah, I can send it to Renee as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Schaaf. I live at 2437 East 43rd Street. I want to thank you for your commitment to working in Erie and so close to a holiday. Thank you for all you do. First of all, I would like to talk about the bus station situation. I know you're aware of it. I know it's been on the news. As a concerned citizen who likes to travel, you definitely need a place to rest after a long bus ride or an airport ride, wherever. People need to use the restroom. You can't just dump a person off and say, in the middle of the night, what have you. Do they follow the schedule like the trains? The trains have different odd times, and a person should not be left alone in the dark without any, it's just unconscionable. We really need to get, you know, you as a council, do whatever you can. What, I know, you know, I know, you know, I've been listening, and I know who owns the bus station, whatever, but we at City Hall have public restrooms. We're only open till 4:30. After 4:30, people are on their own. They don't always know about the food hall, seriously, they don't. Sometimes, you know, people have no clue where to use the restroom. So it's really needed, and especially if you've seen the people who are really direly in need of the restroom. They practically just want to run through that security. So definitely needed, definitely, especially in the winter and at nighttime. So that's my number one thing. Communication. I've been in education long enough, and if you've been in things long enough, sometimes things are cyclical, and what's old is new again. And why not have a time set every week where the Erie Reader, the Erie Times reporters, different news people, meet on a regular basis, right here in chambers at time, and a person from certain groups that are involved with certain things, it's their time to talk, share what they know, and do it that way. As a teacher, we were always required to talk about what's going on in our classroom as much as we could through emails and newsletters electronically. So people who are in the midst of things, take the time to have something to present and get the word out that way. We're in for a cold spell. There are still people out on the streets. Not everyone has a phone to dial the 211 to give them help. Not everyone knows where the sheltering place is, or can walk to the sheltering place. So I'm asking the police and caring people of Erie, Pennsylvania, maybe to pull over if it's a frigid night, and ask the person if they are in need of housing, and the police could take them to shelter, what have you. So people could be on extra need. I have called 911 on people before. You know, you just sort of can tell what a person's situation is by going up, asking their needs, and looking at them in the face. So please, let's, oh. So, speaking of caring people, Erie City Hall's Community Service Foundation was able to give 130 people Christmas gifts. We are such a giving community, and we are so giving right here at City Hall. So the people who did that, did it for three different organizations, and let's have a happy holiday and a good New Year. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity. Wanted to be brief and just say thank you for getting the Environmental Advisory Council ordinance to this point. Wanted to specifically acknowledge the leadership of Mayor Schember and Council President Allen in meeting with our group, allowing there to be public presentations, presenting the roadmap to you all. Getting an ordinance passed is not an easy feat, but it's just the beginning of the work of this type of group. So thank you, thank you very much. And I did want to also say that to have Pat Lupo and Sheri Mason give public comment in one evening is quite an environmental powerhouse of women that I'm very proud to be under the mentorship of over the past year. So I just want to, cannot underscore enough how important those two women are in our community. So please take what they were saying seriously about hold Erie Coke accountable. And I wasn't aware of the barriers that Dr. Mason had faced with some of these recycling monies, but they are internationally known, not just as a scientist and an advocate, but as respected colleagues of many in the environmental community. So thank you all again.
Excuse me, Jenny, can you state your name and address?
Oh, I've gone through this so many times, and yet I somehow still forgot. Jenny Tonkins, 665 North Street, Meadville.
Well, Jenny, we could put you in there too, and then we have the trifecta of environmental advocates.
I've got many years to go under my belt before I can rise to that level, but thank you.
Any other public comment?
Madam President, may I make a public comment? I know it's in the back of the room here. Mr. Sherrill, would you come up here? He's our communications man, and he's leaving us for greener pastures. Just wanted to take the opportunity to let the folks know that when things were working well, he was the one that was working. So if you want to say a word or two, I think the President would let you, and then shake everybody's hand when you leave.
Oh, I could do that. Sure.
Frank, maybe you could tell us a little bit about what you talked about yesterday in your farewell party, because there's some interesting stuff that is going to impact Erie in terms of adaptive reuse and giving us a few laughs.
Yeah, so thank you for the opportunity for serving the people of Erie for the last four, four years about, to the mayor. I give him kudos for that, for hiring me. And then many of you are new, but Mr. Spoon, Councilwoman Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, you've been tried and true for the past four years, and keep me on my toes with the council meetings, and then going through the pandemic. going through the pandemic with all the Zooms and all the things we've done through that. That was a fun endeavor. And then the next thing I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get some of Erie's old theaters up and running again. So I'm going around to different locations where we used to have theaters in Erie and looking at the structural integrity of the buildings and seeing which ones are viable and which ones aren't. And hopefully, one of them I can shake out and make something to hold and have events for the people of Erie at a low cost, because that's something we really don't have in town. So something that has 300, 400 seats, that people can come in, have an event like your band, Mr. Troup. Might be a good fit. But other than that, I'll be moving on in my life. I'll be traveling around with my wife around the country for a few places too. I know we're going to be headed up to Michigan to kind of do the same thing up there, look at a few places and hopefully we can shake this out and kind of get things going across the country and move along and do things that we do. But yeah, I do appreciate everything that I've learned here and experienced and there's really nothing like local government. I've worked from the federal level to the state to the local level and you don't get to know the community like you do when you're working at a level like this, especially with your jobs and my job on social and just being out in the community with the mayor and at events and other things. It was a humbling experience. It was a really gratifying experience and I look forward to staying in the community and furthering that commitment to making Erie a better place for all.
And I guess the request is to come up and shake hands with everybody. I texted you, I think to your other numbers, say thank you for stepping in to stop that humming that was going on.
Oh, yeah.
And I wanted to let you know, when he's talking about Michigan, he's talking about Grand Rapids, which is a city that I've often looked to, to see what innovative stuff they're doing. So I'm hoping he will bring back some good ideas from the craft brewery and
Yeah, Grand Rapids has one of the best craft brewers in the country. So it's definitely on the stop of where I'm going. But other than that, yeah, I'll come up and shake all you guys' hands. That sounds great.
Thank you Frank.
While he's saying goodbye, we should probably take one minute to say happy birthday to Tori. You don't have to come up and talk. Okay. I'm sorry.
No, it was a good, good interlude. Thank you.
Frank did a lot of great work for us.
Any other surprises or acknowledgements? Okay. I guess we move on to the next part of the meeting, Lori.
Ordinances for final passage?
Lori, I have a resolution in there to take $2 million and set it aside for help in next year's budget. I'd like to move it forward, just to let everybody know that we've made attempts to try to save some money. I don't know if I have a second. If I don't, then we'll pull it. But I'd like the motion to move that forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
I guess we'll move it forward then.
Discussion? I'd like to discuss this because in caucus, one of the things that Councilman Brzezinski had suggested doing was cutting money in the Risk Management Fund, which is the fund that pays for the city's self-insured health insurance. Another councilman had suggested whacking proposed new employees, not whacking them personally, lopping them out of the budget. I'm getting ready to do some comedy at your show, Frank, at your theater, Frank. I went back and I looked actually at stories that were, that covered previous council budget deliberations. And I think contrary to what some people think, I was a stickler about a lot of stuff. I questioned the administration over and over again. I pushed for a pay freeze a few years ago. Really asked that we do our due diligence on council. We did the things that I think were necessary this year in approving a stormwater fee, the refuse increase and the sewer rate increase. At a previous budget study session, I tried to explain that the increases that our residents are facing are relatively small compared to what's going on elsewhere in the state, especially in southeast Pennsylvania where private companies now own the water systems. There are enormous fee increases that they're facing. So that was a tough decision. I always look, think back to the Christmas card that Mayor Shember sent me a few years ago saying, continue to ask the tough questions. I'm not giving up on that. I prepared a, what I would hope would be a starting point of a map to go forward immediately in 2023 to address the structural deficit that we have. I'm just confident in this budget. I, we have put in, well, we've put in a lot of hours. The finance department has put in countless hours answering every question for us. Somebody, another council person said, why weren't you thinking about the structural budget earlier this year? We had a different finance director earlier in the year. That finance director left in July. Things have really turned around in my view in terms of the communication we're getting about what we're spending, what our revenues are, what our expenditures are. And I am, I want to thank Ed for pressing us. You don't ever want to just waltz through a budget without really looking at it deeply. But I would not think it would be a good idea to take $2 million out of this budget. We have some really interesting new positions coming on board, somebody, a data analyst, GIS, new police officers. Not everybody's in favor of everything, but I think as Mr. Nelson said in caucus, it would be hard to get everybody to agree on, you know, specific cuts in terms of personnel. The administration has, you know, the coming year to prove that these reorganizations and new bodies coming on board will really help the city move forward. So.
I'd like to say some things. Ed had brought this up before at 5%. I came back and said, I could see 3.3%. And that's going through the budget and naming names and naming positions. You know, we just swore in eight new officers yesterday. So I think there's two. And I think you might have four people here that want to see $2 million cut from the budget, but like Liz points, President Allen here points out from caucus meeting, I think there's four people who want to cut from the budget and I don't think there's four people that can agree on where those cuts would come from. In 2027, we're due to cut two dozen positions. If you look at our projections, that year, the salary and wages goes down. The mayor's told us that we have 24 positions that at the end of the ARPA funding are going to be cut. The matter is, how do we put the pressure on to, if we don't think this budget is viable or sustainable, how do we put those cuts into place earlier? And I've named where. In fact, I put a pretty nice little resolution from the floor that got reversed a couple of months ago. And the fact is that if people want to make cuts, they've got to have the stomach to see where those cuts are made. If they don't have the stomach to make those cuts, I'd love to see our tax bill cut in half with 30 miles of road being paved, 300 cops and 200 firefighters, beautiful ambulances. It just doesn't make math. So until you can name where the cuts are and find four votes to go with it, it's not happening. I thought I had four votes once upon a time and now I only have three. So I don't see where we make this $2 million.
Anybody else speak? Very well said there, Captain. Very well said. Bottom line is, our job is to cut the budget. Our job is not to nitpick it, not to pick on the cops like you love to do, Rock. Don't pick on the cops. You tell the mayor that we want to get revenue and expenditures as close together as we can. And when we tell him to cut two, he finds a place to cut them. He doesn't have to come back and say, it's going to cost you people that are not going to have a job at Christmas. That's not it at all. There's money in that budget. We're passing a budget today, but we haven't seen the transfers as far as everything else that's gone into budget this year. We've been lucky with weather and all that kind of stuff. There's money in that budget that can be moved around. And not touching the water lease money or the other water reserve money. All I'm saying is, if you don't want to do it, don't do it. But I'm going on record as saying that, you know, sometimes you have to prepare for a rainy day in case you didn't notice it's raining. And just because we're getting all this ARPA money and I like to note on this board, tell me what's in those buckets that hasn't been spent yet. Why can't some of that money be set aside so that we have money when it comes down to the budget? That's all I'm saying. And with that.
Can I say one more thing? I really appreciate the pressure that Ed's put on this and I'm happy to stand behind him, taking the lead on it. The administration did respond. They gave us this week $154,198 in further cuts that they made after this resolution was put out there. I appreciate that. I appreciate the good effort on the administration. That brings our deficit next year. Once you shift around the appropriate restricted fund balance, it brings it down from where we worried about 2.2 million down under $2 million. So I appreciate the pressure that Ed's continued to apply through this whole season and the responses of the administration to try to meet that with some degree of appropriate nod of the cap of making things as tight as they can. It's a good effort on both sides here.
Thanks Chuck. And I did want to, I don't know if I'll repeat this as accurately as we heard it in caucus, but we asked Lisa Gomersold, who is the acting finance director, the assistant finance director who has been doing the lead on budgeting. And she said that we're going to end the year in good shape. We don't know what will happen with overtime because of the big storm coming. She told us that there will be transfers. There always are at the end of the year. We do not have a great fund balance according to the government accounting organization standards. We're low in there. So we aren't supposed to end the year with a, you know, hey, we've spent everything that we had or we're trying to clear out the accounts. We need to have that rainy day money in there. So and I don't know if I explained that adequately, Lisa or not. I know we want to move along, but would anybody like Lisa just to have like two minutes to come up so the public knows what we heard in caucus? Or are you good? I didn't hear. You're good? Everybody's good? Okay.
I do have a comment though.
Okay.
So to piggyback what both Chuck and Ed said, and so there's always a reconciliation at the end of the year. And so what I'm going to propose is that the reconciliation money go into a separate account so we can understand that what we have realized, what we have cut, what we weren't able to save because if we once we pay everything off, we want the people to know what benefit that we have returned to them. You know, as a line item.
I can point out that line item. See if you'd like. So in the last week that we cut the $154,198, you'll notice in the budget, when you compare the preliminary budget to the final budget that we were given a record of, if you look in the appropriate restricted fund balance, that amount went down by the same amount. That amount, we should probably expect that that amount gets added to the 2024 budget on the same line item since we won't be out of that money. That's the water reserve, or that's the water prepayment fund. So by the cuts that were made this week, that should last a little bit longer than what we previously planned. But that is a line item that we see and can show back to the public.
Are you seeing a new motion?
No. So I'll address it in resolution form in the first meeting of the year so that we can show this on paper to our citizens.
Okay. I see some nodding heads back there too. So it sounds like that's something that information that will be able to be accounted for and communicated. Correct? Thank you. All right. So now we're voting on, just for those who are following along, Resolution Number Four under New Businesses is going to move up before the to the top of the agenda here for action. So now we're going to vote.
Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Ms. Flores, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the city council direct the administration to cut $2 million out of the 2023 city budget without the use of water lease prepayment or water reserve funds. Mr. Brzezinski? Ms. Flores? Mr. Keys? Mr. Nelson? Mr. Troup? Mr. Witherspoon? Ms. Allen?
No.
Resolution passes, yays four, nays three.
I don't know how we're going to vote on the next budget. We're going to have to have a special, I would suggest we have a special meeting between Christmas and New Year's to vote on the budget because the administration is going to have to come back and tell us how they're going to cut $2 million. And I have suggested that if those cuts are required, that we do some things such as eliminate the large item pickup. We should look at the seasonal employees who maintain the parks and some other things that we don't necessarily have to do. Recycling, electronic recycling.
Some of those are enterprise funds though.
Madam President, once again, it's not our job to make those kinds of specific cuts.
We're at, but we aren't going to, we can't pass a budget tonight. We're going to have to have a special meeting to pass the budget because the budget is going Well, it's going to cut services then. Okay? And you guys own it.
I can tell you, I have no idea how to come up with $2 million out of this budget. I've said that many times. You guys have to figure that out if you want to do it.
The first $500,000 would come out of the sewer count. You raise the sewer, but you took $500,000.
It's not the same budget.
It's cutting revenue instead of expenses.
All right, we're going to have to decide before we get to this when we're going to meet to do this. I don't see how we can pass a budget tonight that has $2 million coming out of it. So before we get to the next part of the agenda, can we go one by one and tell me which day you want to have a special meeting? We have to have time to advertise it. Chuck? Do you have a date?
Anytime.
We need a date.
Tuesday and Thursday is our set of study sessions. Is that correct?
Anytime.
Yes. So it has to be Tuesday or Thursday? I say Tuesday. I'd say Tuesday.
Thanks for ruining everybody's Christmas week, guys. Well, you did it. You guys own this. So Tuesday? Is that enough time, Lori? Ed? Is that enough days to advertise a special meeting?
I don't know whether you can get the ad in the paper.
How about Thursday, then?
Well...
Deadlines are going to be tight because of the holiday.
Yeah, they have, I don't know what they are.
Okay.
Also, if you want this money cut, you're going to have to figure out where it's cut from. Because I can't imagine any place we should be cutting $2 million.
Well, I think we ought to cut it out of that risk management fund. And if somebody gets cancer or has a heart condition or a brain tumor... No, I am not, Ed, because this is ridiculous.
You're right.
Hey, let's, yeah, let's move on.
As Vice President, I suggest we go on with the...
Sure.
Okay. I might need a little guidance. Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16325, Official Ordinance Number 642022, An ordinance appropriating the sum of $2,550,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are from the multimodal transportation fund grant from PennDOT for highway and bridge projects. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Bill Number 16325 and now known as Official File Ordinance 642022 be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 642022, finally by yays seven, nays two.
I think we need a little help here, Ed, on the budget and the mileage rate. Well, the mileage, well...
No.
With the mileage rate, if we're going to cut, are we going to cut taxes?
No. No, because in his resolution, he said that water lease prepayment was where the 2 million would come from. We would just not transfer that. So there's no effect on taxes.
No, he says without that. Not with it, it's without it.
Well, I don't know if there's going to be a tax cut, tax increase until I see a budget. So you would have to identify a budget. Then you have to figure out a way to pay for that budget. So...
But his resolution specifically states where the money is. How would that, that wouldn't affect tax dollars. There's plenty of cushion there.
I don't know what budget ultimately would be approved by council. That's all I'm saying. I agree with you, but I don't know. So right now you have, this is somewhat unique, but right now you have a motion and a second to address a budget. You've got a resolution that's passed, but you still also have a budget in front of you. If you approve the budget, you would in essence nullify the effect of the resolution. You're directing the mayor to cut 2,000 out of the budget.
2 million.
Or 2 million, I'm sorry.
2,000 would be easier.
2,000 is probably easier, but you currently have a budget in front of you that you still need to vote on.
Okay. So do we have to... Okay.
You would read it and vote on it.
Okay.
And we'll take it from there.
Okay. But we're voting on the budget that has been already presented to us, though? Is that correct?
It's the only budget you have. And Mr. Brzezinski asked, could you table it? You can table it. It would require a motion and a second and at least four votes to table.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table, sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson, to table the Budget Ordinance 16316. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
No.
Motion to table passes, yays six, nays one.
So given that we've tabled the budget ordinance, that would render the tax ordinance, at least at this point moot, I would say that that would also be tabled.
Motion to table it. Call for the vote.
Motion to table the fixing the tax rate, Council File Number 16313. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
No.
Motion to table passes, yays six, nays one.
Question for the solicitor. So because it was tabled, we have one reading. So if we take action at the next meeting, that would be considered the second reading?
Yes. I mean, you can, yeah, you're fine. I'm not worried about that. I'm more worried about we have to have a budget that ultimately gets approved by the end of the year. And you have the mayor indicating that he does not know where those cuts would come. And so it's conceivable that he could present a budget with $2 million in cuts and that may meet with the satisfaction of council. That's not my worry. My worry is if you're presented with a budget that does not reflect $2 million in cuts, then we could be at a point where we're at a stalemate. But that'll be for the drama of the next meeting.
Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16326, An Ordinance Creating an Environmental Advisory Council, EAC, as authorized by Pennsylvania Law 53 PA CSA 2322, Providing Operating Procedures and Stating the Powers of the EAC. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Ordinance 16326, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt, Council File Ordinance 16326 by yays seven, nays two on first reading. Council File Number 16327, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $500,000 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof. Funds are from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development COVID-19 ARPA Pandemic Response Grant Program for Rare Pacific Company Project. Sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Ordinance Number 16327, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City Council read and adopt, Council File Ordinance 16327 by yays seven, nays two on first reading. Council File Number 16328, An Ordinance Requiring the Registration and Maintenance of Vacant and Foreclosure Properties Located in the City of Erie. Sponsored by Mr. Nelson, seconded by Mr. Keys.
Do I need to point out the amendment on this ahead of time? Mr. Betza?
That'd be fine.
Okay. There's just a slight typo there, or not typo, but there was, in the discussion, the fee there, it says that it's $200. Well, $200 is what the city's taking after potentially having a contractor take 100. So the fee is going to be 300. This is, it's something I didn't catch until this afternoon. I emailed Mr. Betza, and we didn't have enough time to communicate it out till right now. Thank you.
What's that? Under vacant property number three?
Yes. It's there in a couple spots. Yeah. It's there in a couple spots with vacant and the foreclosure part.
So can you explain that that fee could actually be up to like $600 a year then? Because it's every six months.
Yes, it's every six months, yes.
Correct.
Can we discuss this, though?
Yes. Yeah, you have a motion and a second, and now it's discussion.
I'm voting against this. I've talked about this with Chuck before, and I started thinking about two different times when I had vacant properties. The first time was after my son died. My son and my daughter-in-law were living in my old house, and my daughter-in-law eventually moved out. Meanwhile, I was in my other house, and my husband died. So I was waiting until that house sold. It took almost a year of me living in the house where I was living before the house got sold. My other house was vacant. I meanwhile kept everything up, obviously paid the taxes, made sure that it was maintained. Then, when my dad died, my siblings and I kept that house for two years. We weren't ready to sell it. We paid the taxes, maintained it, nobody was living there. I know I'm not alone in having experienced one, waiting for a property to sell, and the market is getting tight again, and/or taking time to dispose of a property where your loved ones are no longer alive. So I think this is, I don't see, we have a major problem. We've talked about it with blight. I don't see how this helps. There was a house on my street where I think the people moved from Erie to Mill Creek. Their house sat vacant for two years while they were trying to get a certain price for their house, and then they finally sold it. So I'm voting no.
Yeah. I'd love to address some of those. We had this in committee, so we had a chance to talk to a consultant about this. And those will come down to the enforcement side. So it's not explicitly written into the legislation, but it's very unlikely to be enforced from the city side. On the vacancy side, the success rate of enforcing some of these is not a very impressive number. Now, as you point out examples in your neighborhood, I have a house at the corner of Cherry and Ninth that has been vacant for 12 years now. It was condemned this month, and it has been sat on in a very different way than what you're experiencing. That's where we expect, according to the committee and talking to the consultant, to see this enforced thoroughly, is to keep these houses in good condition off the blight rolls and in circulation so that we, you know, we as a nation have a housing issue, shortage, and this will keep them in action. This ordinance has been instituted in dozens of cities, and it has been very effective. I haven't seen anyone add this ordinance and then get rid of it and find these faults with it. It's generally been successful. It's much more successful on the foreclosure side of it. There we'll be seeing about a 90% success rate, according to what the consultant said. And this is looking at about, if we look at those 30% success rate and 90% success rates, consultants looking at this at like somewhere between like about 150 and maybe even 300,000 in revenue for our planning department so that we can implement a lot of these, a lot of this progress for the city. So I'm, as President Allen offers her reasons for voting no against this, you know, I just offer that information and plead for, you know, three more votes. I trust that with the Community Economic Development Committee passing this, that we've got a couple votes there. But this is going to be an exciting thing, I think, to keep our city from falling into further decline.
I just want to make sure that you said that there's going to be a fee, but some people will skate by not having to pay it because they aren't going to come to the attention of the consultant. Am I right?
No, no. What's going to happen is, as you talk about the properties that you offer as examples, those are not very apparent. So it's going to be very difficult to notice that and enforce that. Whereas a vacant house at the corner of my block, it is apparent. It is obviously vacant, and that will be on enforcement. You need feet on the ground saying that house right there is vacant to even identify this and enforce the fee. And it sounds like the way you described your house, I don't, I'm not sure that anyone would notice. I mean, you technically...
Yeah, but I think that people are going to be out there and say, especially as the housing market tightens. Well, you know it all, so we'll vote.
And I...
I just think it could add up. $300 every six months, so we're adding one more burden on people.
So we talked about this. And I thought we'd come to the resolution that we were going to tier the implementation.
That's not in the legislation. It's in the enforcement and the implementation, yes. But it's all coming together on the same thing so that we can roll it out as the executive branch can, has the ability to keep up with it.
Because, you know, we were with the solicitor and, you know, and also the solicitor...
There was a...
If we weren't going to enforce it, don't make the rule unless we're going to set up ourselves to enforce the rule. The quote.
That was an accurate quote, if you're going to have a law, enforce it. There was talk of doing it when we were in that committee meeting about doing one or the other. The talk was foreclosure. But the motion that was presented to make the ordinance came from Mr. Nelson, and he wanted to include both.
And that's what the consultant and planning director had suggested would be the most effective way to do it.
Call for the question.
I want to go more. So I'm definitely for the vacancy in the foreclosure registry. You know, I have pause with the general rules, as Liz pointed out, that people who have vacant houses usually have limited resources. And, or they're not getting revenue from them, or, you know, and so they're still paying the taxes. So I don't know if that takes, needs further discussion. But we don't have a way set up to police the other side.
Call for the question.
Council File Ordinance 16328, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.
No.
City Council read and adopt, Council File Ordinance Number 16328 by yays five, nays two on first reading. This takes us to New Business.
Motion to move the balance.
Any separations?
No.
Call for the vote.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Resolution passes, yays seven, nays two.
I'm going to ask, instead of like going up and down the line to see if anybody has a committee report, does anybody have a committee report? Any committee reports in the affirmative?
I wrote a seven-page report and threw it on my Facebook to review my year. It's thorough. I suggest people go waste a lot of time reading that. That's my committee report.
Okay. My only committee report is that I hope in 2023 we can switch to actually saying our yes votes out loud instead of just having them be silent and then use the tote board. It's not a committee report, it's just a recommendation. Anybody else have a committee report?
Shh, hang around with that. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Oh, we still have a mayor's report and a solicitor's report.
Regarding the use of the tote board, anyone can call tote board at any point in time.
I would like to make it routine, though, because... I would like to make it routine, though, because I think under ADA, I think it would be really helpful. There are people who either can see and may not be able to hear, and those who maybe not are able to see but could hear us if we had our yes votes out loud. So, I think we ought to be able to be as transparent as possible.
Well, I'll tell you what, uh, why don't we just do a random right now? Because the switch up doesn't necessarily mean yes.
On each one, it's different. It's not like a side to side. We got to clear, we got to clear your board.
She wants to use it all.
We got to clear your board. Just clear. Uh, everybody vote yes. You got to turn the light on or something? Turn it on.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Love it. You go back. Somebody has to be wearing the stereos with that.
Everybody vote. Everybody do a vote.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, you've been president all year, and you're just not learning how to do this. I think that's a.
Well, no, there, no, the last time I asked about, somebody said it wasn't like synced or something, it wasn't with, with the right people, so.
I, I think you did ask at your first.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we talked about that. The first one, we tried it out just like this.
All right, just before everybody gets up and leaves, though, is there anything from the solicitor or the mayor?
Just briefly, I wanted to report that, uh, we did enter into an agreement, um, a tentative agreement, it gets final vote, uh, in next week, but with the Teamsters in our contract negotiation, it's a five-year contract, um, they'll vote to, uh, approve or reject it, but that'll be done next week. Uh, but, uh, that contract, I think, uh, allows us to be fiscally responsible, so. But I'll give a report once that's ultimately approved.
Thanks, Ed. Do you know what day the vote is?
I believe the 27th.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, I know it's the 27th, December 27th.
Thanks. Okay. Mayor?
Just very briefly, I just wanted to say I'm very disappointed they didn't pass the budget, and, uh, we'll be meeting to discuss what we need to do. Thank you.
And Lori, you'll figure out, uh, ad-wise, when we can meet to advertise it? Can you let her read?
It's a special meeting, correct?
I don't, yeah, we just, we have to really get an ad in the paper, we'll get it.
Okay.
So, it doesn't necessarily have to be a Tuesday or Thursday, right?
Correct.
Is it like being, right?
I could do.
Okay.
You aren't off on Wednesday?
You don't have to have an ad to vote on the final budget? Okay.
Isn't, do we recess today?
So, what, what we're, well, before, don't hit that. Uh, what we're talking about is when, when will we do this? And there's a couple of options. I mean, you could recess this meeting, uh, and come back at a, at an identified time and date without a burden of placing an additional ad. We also already have advertised Tuesdays and Thursdays, so we, we may be fine there. But ideally, if we could pick the time and date now, then we could figure out the best way to, to do that.
So, I have to be here?
My son is coming home. He had to change his plans because of the cyclone bomb, so I really want to be here next week. Maybe I won't come. It's no requirement.
Okay, so, we're proposing to recess tonight's meeting at 8:49 PM and meet again Tuesday, December 27th, at 5:30 PM.
To approve a budget and tax ordinance.
Thanks, Lori.
So, it should be noted that if it's a special meeting, we can only address those two things.
Well, we're actually going to reconvene the meeting, so, but there would be nothing else on the agenda, and if we're doing anything of any substance, it would need to appear on the agenda. So, I, I agree, maybe technically I disagree with the way you said it, but I agree with the sentiment. We're doing two things, and then we're done.
Guess when it'll be 5:30?
5:30.
Do we vote to recess or just recess?
Just recess.
Just, just, just go, just leave.